Good evening, welcome to the City Council meeting on Wednesday, November 7th, 2002. Can I have roll call, please?
Donald Sykowsky.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Dan Hagan.
Present.
Joseph McCoy.
Here.
Oga Levitz.
Present.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Nathan Zeke.
Present.
There will be no approval dismissed, and certainly our city clerk is excused handling seventy-six percent voter turnout yesterday, so a well-done job, so we'll be approving the minutes.
I don't think that's a legitimate excuse at all.
Next week. So, public speak time, if there are anyone here who would like to address the City Council about anything other than what's on the public hearing schedule, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Okay, being seen, we can move on to communications from elected officials, Councilor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to announce that the East Hampton Veterans Council will be having Veterans Day observances November 11th, 2012, starting at ten a.m. at the American Legion Post, 224 in East Hampton. At ten thirty, they will proceed from the Legion Post to Town Hall Civil War Monument, and then proceed to the Brookside Cemetery Veterans Monument, and at eleven, they will be at the Emily Wilson Memorial Library. So, anybody interested in going to the Veterans Day observances, they will be November 11th. And also, we are going to be signing tonight, and we have received from the assessors, the L.A. five sheet that we approved at our last meeting. That concludes.
Great, thank you. Mayor Communications.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of items that aren't on your agenda. I believe you were provided both these items by the city clerk. The first is a formal withdrawal of the supplemental appropriation that you have a public hearing for, and I wanted to make sure that you got that ahead of the hearing, and I think you understand why. The reason for the withdrawal is that the override that was on the ballot yesterday that would have funded this appropriation request was not approved by the voters. And the second is a copy of a formal disclosure provided to the city clerk's office today regarding conflict of interest laws, chapters 268a, and the mayor's requirement to act under chapter thirty-two B while being a participant in said fine. So, that's information only, and it's a disclosure requirement of the conflict of interest laws.
Okay, thank you very much. I guess we can move on to reports with standing committees, Rules and Government Relations, Councilor Rist.
Mr. President, other than the chapter thirty-two B, which is on the public hearing agenda, I have no report as of yet. We have not scheduled the Mounttown plant resolution request yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Councilor Hagan.
Finance, we have three public hearings, which will take place after the thirty-two B hearings, which are on the agenda for the, as the mayor said, the override, which is no longer pertinent, the funding for the deficit in property tax refund overlays, and set aside for the CPA funding. I would like, on the other matters on the agenda, I would like to set three public hearings, and if it's okay with the council, I'll set them in one motion. I'd like to, and this, all these public hearings would be for our next meeting, which I believe is Tuesday, November 20th.
Right.
At six p.m. The first would be a public hearing for a forty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollar appropriation for energy-efficient lighting improvements in four school buildings. The second would be eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars for energy-efficient lighting improvements in four DPW facilities, and the final public hearing would be a ten thousand, two hundred and fifty dollar appropriation from CPA funds for an agricultural preservation restriction on the law and property.
Second. Okay, we have motion of second for setting those public hearings for November 20th. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Twenty for Tuesday.
Yeah, because of the holiday. The only other item is our next subcommittee meeting will be next Wednesday, 11:14, 2012, downstairs in room one.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm gonna have to start speaking slower, we're gonna be before our public hearings. Public safety, I have no reports for public safety. Appointments, Councilor Winnie.
Thank you. We met tonight at five forty-five, and we met to discuss the appointment of Josh Rosenblatt to Development Industrial Committee, with the term of expiration December 31st, 2014. It was unanimous, three to zero, that we recommend the appointment to the full City Council, but that being said, I'd like to make the motion that we appoint Josh Rosenblatt to Development and Industrial Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have motion of second for appointment of John Rosenblatt to the Development Industrial Committee. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Thank you. Our next meeting will be November 20th at five thirty to review the next set of appointments, which are forty-four of them.
Okay, actually, I was gonna say, why don't, since we're...
Thanks for counting.
Since we have time, do you want to move that now?
Yeah, that's fine. I move the next set of appointments, forty-four of them, as I'm told, to Appointment Subcommittee.
Second. Okay, I have motion of second to move the forty-four appointment, or appointments, to the Appointments Committee. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. That concludes your report.
That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Organants, Councilor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll go slow.
Yeah, thank you.
So, first of all, I just want to say that we weren't able to have a subcommittee meeting since our last meeting, so I want to schedule our next meeting for a week from tonight, which would be November 14th at six p.m., and I imagine we'll be in one of the rooms downstairs, whichever one's open. And I do need to go through each one of these items on our agenda to ask for an extension for each one, and I'll make a motion on each one separately.
Okay.
Go slower. So, I'd like to ask, I move to have a sixty-day extension on Councilor Cobb's request to review special permitting process.
Second.
Okay, I motion a second for a sixty-day extension on the special permitting process. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Thank you, and I would also like to ask for a sixty-day extension on Councilor Sykowsky's request on stretch code and over fifty-five housing bonus as well.
Second.
Okay, I motion a second for a sixty-day extension for the Councilor Sykowsky's request to rescind stretch code. Any additional comments, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Finally, I'd like to move to have a sixty-day extension on Councilor Cobb's request to discuss the keeping of chickens.
Okay, we have motion of second for the discussion of the zoning amendment relating to the keeping of chickens. Any other additional discussions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you for trying. Okay, how about property?
No report this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so, we've run through our agenda, and we can't start this.
Well, you want to say something?
Okay, well, I'm sorry, Mike, because we have advertised a meeting at six fifteen for public hearing, we do have to wait till six fifteen until we can open the public hearing, so, I apologize, but make yourself at home.
Here, Joe.
I knew that. I've done some open. So, as I said, I'm gonna go. I've got some time.
This is new. I don't think we've ever signed one like that. I don't remember. I think we each have to sign it, and I don't think there's any line.
Dan, do you think we should rescind, because we are signing? Do you think we should just do the school one first, just to get that out?
Yes, we're signing it now. I don't know where we're signing that. It took us a lot of years. I would say the city of ECM does a lot. Yeah, yeah, right. Well, do you get that? I don't know. He's making fun of me, it's all my name.
I moved that.
Yeah, no, they ran out of lines for us, obviously. To engage in the process. Change health insurance.
Change health. I couldn't believe it. I couldn't believe it. My wife is because she didn't want to let me start this.
It's okay. It's okay.
My neighbor, Frau, he's pretty rough.
I'm sorry.
I didn't mean to say that.
I'm sorry.
Other nature doesn't cause the water like that. You know, it wouldn't predict me that, because we were just knocking, built that wall.
Yeah, he's home, and he's better, I guess, you know, the city's still on painkillers, he's gonna start outpatient care. I guess he goes as far as the mailbox.
He's got big scars.
Yeah, he had the big, you know, you know, Justin, you said, the average hip replacement's like a five to six inch, but his joint was so tight, he needed to do a nine inch.
Lucky he was home.
Other nature doesn't cause the water like that. You know, it wouldn't predict me that, because we were just knocking, built that wall.
Yeah, he's home, and he's better, I guess, you know, the city's still on painkillers, he's gonna start outpatient care. I guess he goes as far as the mailbox.
He's got big scars.
Yeah, he had the big, you know, you know, you know, Justin, you said, the average hip replacement's like a five to six inch, but his joint was so tight, he needed to do a nine inch.
I just have to give a message, I got a message.
Rivers, seven, twelve years.
They're actually saying, yeah, it's not like, it's nice, and everybody's in the shoreline.
Some places it's gone up, but others it's pretty much staying the same.
Someone's drinking lots of homes, I mean, they're talking forty thousand.
We're reading a little bit about that today.
Oh, hell, yes.
You see, it's all cars up here, blowing Staten Island, usually that area from the governor's seat.
I'll get me a problem.
Say hello to them.
What's underwater, or they could eat the butt?
Justin.
I went, I went the best.
Four years ago, I got stuck here watching every political show.
My office is come.
Catching two each year, every once a week.
About four hundred years.
I fell in the morning, I fell off.
I fell in the morning.
For me, I stayed up till.
I was gonna look, it's my brief view of last night.
It's mostly about, you know, it's pretty much.
It's pretty much.
I'll get me a problem.
You probably listen, probably listen.
Say hello to them.
What's underwater, or they could eat the butt?
Justin.
The electoral result, we lost.
I went, I went the best.
Four years ago, I got stuck here watching every political show.
This year, I catch two each year, every once a week.
About four hundred years.
I fell in the morning, I fell off.
I fell in the morning.
For me, I stayed up till.
I was gonna look, it's my brief view of last night.
It's pretty much.
It's sixty-two, it's all sunny.
I know.
How crazy is that?
Okay, I guess we can re-adjourn, my clock has six fifteen, so I will accept a motion
to open the public hearing. Motion of second, open a public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Public hearings are open. I'm gonna go a little bit out of order here, first, we're going to address one of the public hearings, which was the two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for additional funding for the override election, outcome of the election. Councilor Hagan?
Yeah, as the mayor said in the, his report, this was an item that was placed on the agenda, and I'll do a quick reading of it, and then we'll open it up for a public hearing in case anyone wants to comment on the override, what happened at the override, and then we'll close it. This was a request for two hundred and fifty-five thousand to be appropriated from taxation and appropriated to net, excuse me, school net spending. The amount requested would be used for the following purpose, to provide additional resources to the school department in the current fiscal year, subject to voter approval of November sixth override. So, having read that, is there anyone here that wanted to comment on this appropriation or the override in general? Not seeing any, I will follow, as the mayor said, he provided us a formal request, it reads, please accept this correspondence as a formal request to withdraw the supplemental appropriation request of two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to fund school net spending. The voters defeated a request to authorize additional taxation for this purpose, and the funds are not available. I'll make that in the form of a motion that we remove this from the agenda without prejudice at this time.
Second. Okay, we have motion of second to remove the appropriation for the school spending from the agenda. Additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Okay, so, I just wanted, in case there was someone here from the school system that wanted to address that, but moving on, we'll now open the public hearing concerning the adoption of MGL chapter thirty-two B, sections twenty-one through twenty-three, so, Councilor Rist.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you have received my report, I will first announce what that report indicates and allow the majority report to be read by Councilor Oga Levitz, and I will read a minority report, and I'll ask the Finance Director, Zawadzki, to come up to answer any questions. As you have received, the Rules and Government Relations Committee did vote two to one against adoption, with Councilors Cobb and Oga Levitz voting against and myself voting in favor. I have attached the Insurance Advisory Committee's opinion, which also was against the adoption. I want to thank, for the moment, especially Representative John Seibek, who came to all our meetings and provided very good information. For those of you that don't know this, Representative Seibek and his committee that he chairs was the primary sponsor and also the author of the new healthcare law. That said, I also wanted to announce that according to the law's requirements, notification to all collective bargaining units as required under the law was sent, I have a letter in my hand of October 11th indicating that this particular public hearing was to be held, and it was sent to all our collective bargaining units as required by the Personnel Director. With that, I'd like Councilor Oga Levitz to please report the majority report. Thank you, sir.
Okay. At the Rules and Government Relations Committee, we heard extensive testimony and received considerable information, including representation by Representative Seibek. With all this, the committee voted one to two to not support the adoption of this measure. To summarize, our majority decision is based on the following facts. One, input from Representative Seibek indicating this is a option, not a mandate, and that this option may not be the best for every community. Two, letter from our Insurance Advisory Committee to not adopt this measure. Three, comment from the Finance Director that any potential savings is currently unknown. Four, notes from our deliberations that health insurance premium costs with the trust have remained relatively flat for the last six years, with no increases for the last three years at least. Five, our current plan with the trust includes in its design an employee plus one option, that any change to it will affect ninety-three employees. Six, the annual savings that we have already achieved when our current plan with the trust was compared with the GIC benchmark plan, Tufts, amounted to four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars. Simply put, our current system is not broken, so why are we trying to fix it? There are other pieces of information not included that we also considered when concluding our vote. For example, if chapter twenty-one were adopted, which would mean we implicitly have adopted twenty-two and twenty-three, the City Council would be completely taken out of any future negotiations and have nothing to do with determining healthcare benefits in the future. Right now, even though limited, we have some leverage through our budget approval process. Also, the accelerated negotiations and approval process, while maintaining that some would call employee protections, clearly as stated in all our summaries, takes any decision out of the bargaining under MGL chapter thirty-two B, section nineteen, or individual collective bargaining units under MGL chapter one fifty-e. There are other complexities in this legislation that should also be noted for consideration when rendering a vote. These include the five percent savings rule in order to take advantage of section twenty-three when moving into a GIC plan, and the fact that for one year only, any potential savings, once all requirements have been satisfied, can be split by a maximum of seventy-five, twenty-five, with the twenty-five percent going to employees, hopefully to defer any impact. It is our hope that after a careful review of this report and a review of the information attached, that the members of the City Council will come to the same conclusion as the majority opinion of the Rules Committee and the Insurance Advisory Committee, and vote to not adopt this measure. I would like to thank all of you for taking the time to review this measure and for your consideration and vote. I especially would like to thank Councilor Rist for being fair and thorough in his role as Chairman of the Rules Committee on this issue, but most of all, I will duly miss the opportunity to vote against this measure. Sincerely, Justin Cobb and Chester O'Leary.
Thank you. I'll now present the minority report, which is my own. First of all, I wanted to say to everybody in this room, this was a difficult decision. I strongly value our employees and the work they do, so I would never personally take any action that seriously jeopardizes the right to good healthcare. I don't believe my vote in favor of adopting this law would do so, but it will give options to the city and its employees that are cost-effective. I'm supporting the adoption of this statute, as I believe the city and its taxpayers must be protected from future healthcare increases, so such costs don't result in more cuts to personnel and services. The evidence is strong that giving the city this option will save funds that can be used to return personnel to depleted departments, pave roads, fix infrastructure, and provide funds so requests for tax overrides aren't necessary. In fact, the taxpayer sent the message last evening that the city must live within its means. This bill was sponsored by John Seibek, co-written by him and the committee he chairs. Throughout his career, he has been a friend to labor. This bill and our decision should not be considered adversarial. In fact, the state labor leaders eventually helped write it and agreed to it. The current Insurance Advisory Committee has demonstrated a desire to help defray healthcare costs as well. Representative Seibek feels the adoption of this law will save cities and towns substantially, and savings are already far above projections. Indeed, many cities and towns are seeing substantial savings having adopted this law. The city of North Hampton has recently adopted this law, and I just want to put an aside out there, that Representative Seibek made no recommendation to the city, yea or nay, to adopt it. He was informing us of its provisions and how it has been used throughout the state. There are strong employee protections in place in the language. There is ample room for negotiation in the provisions established under section twenty-one. The adoption of a municipal haircare, healthcare review panel, which will act as an arbitrator if negotiations stall, is a failsafe to changes being dictated by the administration. I firmly believe that the panel will be impartial, or even be more inclined to protect employees. The current Insurance Advisory Committee will not be dismanted, but become a part of this new process. Under section twenty-two, the Hampshire Trust, our current healthcare administrator, remains a viable option, provided it can demonstrate comparable savings to like plans within the GIC. Therefore, there is good reason to believe that this law will not need to be implemented immediately, but it should be in place if costs escalate. This law does not change the ability of the unions to collective bargain the percentage of premium members would pay. Given the law substantially changes the way healthcare plans are termed by the city, it is clear that it is legitimate to accept that premium distribution can be reasonably negotiated for all new union contracts in order to mitigate any new cost increases, so healthcare costs are not completely removed from the collective bargaining in the future. Section twenty-two E provides that any proposal must mitigate unusual high out-of-pocket expenses for employees, and that savings be distributed to subscribers to help with costs during the first year. Without this authority in place, should the city face substantial increase in healthcare costs, the timing of reevaluating, adopting these sections would most likely take at least one fiscal year. It would need a new council review and be subject to enrollment deadlines. Without this tool or having healthcare options in place, the city would be hard-pressed to maintain existing personnel levels should healthcare increase. Indeed, the cost may result in additional reduction in staffing affecting all departments. We have an obligation to the taxpayers to provide the services they expect, public safety, public works, and quality education. Indeed, we also have an obligation to give the best affordable healthcare to our employees, but it is that affordability that has to be determined by cities and towns in concert with its employees. That's all I want to say, the rest of the report speaks for itself. I would like to now ask, Mr. President, if Finance Director Zawadzki would come forward to answer any of our questions.
Okay, Counselor, I mean, Finance Director, uh, Zawadzki. I know, it's, I guess, before, maybe before you answer questions, did you want to summarize from your perspective what this means and...
with its employees. That's all I want to say. The rest of the report speaks for itself. I would like to now ask, Mr. President, if Finance Director Zawinski would come forward to answer any of our questions.
Counselor, I mean, Finance Director Zawinski. I know. I guess maybe before you answer questions, did you want to summarize from your perspective what this means?
Not really, but I just think that this legislation was designed to change the way that we negotiate healthcare, but it doesn't mean that we don't negotiate healthcare, and it makes the process, it does make the process faster, and I know that some people are concerned about that, but I want to be able to look at healthcare and make adjustments to it, if we can, in a timely manner, because if you don't, then your quotes become stale and you have to start all over again. You're stuck wherever you are. So that's my feeling on that. And I also think that what's being overlooked here is that the legislation, because of the way it was written in cooperation with the labor unions, does provide protections and sharing of savings to both union and non-union employees, because in the healthcare savings, if any should be achieved, that that, and those savings sharing, isn't something that we currently have.
Are there any questions for Finance Director?
Just one comment. I guess I'd like to hear from the public first, and then maybe I'll have a question or two for the Finance Director.
Okay, you can maybe come back if that's the case. I guess for now, I guess now, thank you very much. Mayor, would you like to make a comment?
You have a lot of folks that I think want to talk to you, so I'll make my comments brief, and I've written them, so I won't get sidetracked. I am in favor of your adoption of Sections 21 to 23 of Chapter 32B as a method of health insurance selection that's been made available, as you know, by the legislature with cooperation from statewide labor that provides savings to the city budget and a guaranteed share of those savings to their employees. Over the past decades, increases in health insurance costs have directly reduced local services to our citizens and has caused us to reduce staff levels in all major departments. Today, we face a $900,000 structural deficit in the School Department and an unfunded health insurance liability in excess of $25 million. Adoption of this law will allow us to seek further savings, and I know that Melissa doesn't want to pin a number down because there are variables, but if you look at the variables she provided you, the possibility of those savings could exceed $500,000 in the first year. Passage of this law, allowing us to use this law, will guarantee that half of those savings in the first year go back to the employees. One in savings to their share, their 25% share of the plan design, so 25% of the savings will go because the premium will come down, and the law requires that another 25% of the savings be set aside for those employees. Over the years, and you know it, this administration and all the staff, the management here in the city, have worked diligently to try to save money in every possible way, by implementing changes in the way we operate, by embracing innovations in our approach to problem-solving and our approach to what we do day-to-day, excuse me, and by embracing new and much more efficient technologies. By providing us with the authority to work in cooperation with the employees to reduce our health insurance costs, you'll further the city's capacity to continue to live within our means and to provide the vital public services that the taxpayers demand of us. Your failure to act will result in higher operating costs for the city. There's no question about that, and anybody who says that that's not true is mistaken. It will lead to staff layoffs, and it will lead to reduced services to the public. I do urge you to vote in favor of adopting Chapters 21 to 23 of Chapter 32B, because it's the right thing to do for all the right reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, we can open up to the public, so you can come up to the podium one by one, obviously, and just for the record, if you can state your name and address as you come up. Obviously, with so many people here, we would like to keep this short. If there are, if you're in a group and you want one person to speak for you, that would be great. So if you can start coming up and try to keep your comments to be like two to three minutes at most, just so we can get through everybody who may want to speak tonight. So anyway, anyone can start coming up and just name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Jimmy Dunham. I reside at Seven Overlook Drive in East Hampton. A little bit of background, I, in the past, have been a member of the Insurance Advisory Committee for an excessive ten years and was Chairman of that committee. I presently am a member and have been for fifteen years and presently chair the East Hampton Retirement Board. And I rise tonight to speak against the adoption of this for various reasons, some of which I would like to list for you. Number one, the insurance trust that we're in now is a nonprofit organization. Therefore, it doesn't have CEOs and presidents, vice presidents, that it has to pay million-dollar bonuses to. It has four people that run the trust, and therefore, they're able to keep the rates and the premiums low, so that we can afford them. As a matter of fact, as Counselor Ogolewitz happened to mention, the rates for anyone in the premiums for anyone in the HMOs has not increased in the last three years. Anyone enrolled in MedX, their rates have not increased in the last six years. A primary interest here is that this particular trust offers what they refer to as a plus one. Other insurance companies have referred to this maybe as a duo or a two-person plan. Presently, there are no other insurance companies around that offer this. So anyone in our plan that now utilizes a plus-one plan will be forced into a family plan, which means that the premiums are going to skyrocket. They're going to go up 25% for the employee, but they're going to go up 75% for the town. And by the way, we have ninety-three people that now utilize a plus-one program. Also, as far as the trust is concerned, if you're taken out of the trust, or if we're taken out of the trust, you have to wait a minimum of two years before you can apply to get back in. And at that time, you have to provide them with several years of claims experience before they'll decide whether to let you back into the trust or not. Concerning some matters of money, which I found rather interesting, the required 32B reporting indicates that the trust saved the City of East Hampton $478,000 versus the GIC benchmark. Okay. The GIC benchmark, just for common knowledge here, is when the state devised this program, they said if you were to adopt this legislation and you wanted to remove your insurance provider and move you into someone else, you had to be able to demonstrate a 5% savings by doing that. And so with that, they had to compare it to something. So they took the GIC and their benchmark program, which is the Guardian program, they have about eleven different programs. The Guardian is the program that is most utilized by the most number of members, and that's what they compare it to. Compared to that, our program was $478,000 less. The second thing that's of interest is that the group trust participates in a federal retiree drug subsidy, okay? And that drug subsidy enabled the trust to rebate to the City of East Hampton $65,000 a year, every year. And boy, that was news to me, because in all of our debates with the City Council, with the Subcommittee, and all the discussions that we had with the Finance Director and everything about the cost of insurances and stuff, that $65,000 was never mentioned. But it was mentioned by the Director of the Trust. And by the way, if anyone has questions about the trust tonight, I'd ask the Director to be present here. And he is here, and he'll be happy to take the podium and answer any questions that you may have concerning that. Let me just catch up my notes here a little bit. Okay. Oh, also, the trust has taken, oh, well, I shouldn't say taken, has reserved approximately $25 million with which to offset any increase in premiums. So we're already at three years, and six years for MedX, they've got another $25 million set aside to defer any further premium costs. Other reasons why I feel that we should not adopt this legislation is that, once you adopt it, as Counselor Ogolewitz said, the City Council's removed from everything. All of the jurisdiction goes to the mayor. Now, that's entirely true, there will be a committee. There's a new committee formed, which will consist of one member from each of the bargaining units in town, and one member that is appointed from the state or by the state to represent the retirees, and that person will have a 10% vote. If that committee is formed, that person will be myself. I'm hopeful that we don't get to that point with that committee, because once we do, the mayor goes out and searches for an insurance plan, and then he presents that plan to the committee. They then have thirty days with which to come to an agreement. And I think there's four or five city departments now that have been without contracts for two years because they can't come to an agreement. In thirty days to come to an agreement over an insurance program, it's not going to happen. So then it goes to a three-member board. That board is made up of the mayor, one person from the committee I'm speaking of, and a person that's directed, I'm sorry, that's appointed by the Director of Finance for the state. And those three members have to hash out what's going to happen with the insurance program. Should we be removed, I mentioned that already, that it would take us two years to get back in. The second thing is that, as far as negotiations and collective bargaining go, originally the insurance premiums here were split at an 85-15 ratio with the town. Then it was bargained and brought down to an 80-20. And then it was bargained and brought down to a 75-25. So to say that the bargaining doesn't work, or that the Insurance Advisory Committee doesn't scout around for the best possible insurance, is just ludicrous. It's not true. I mean, we have the proof that it works. The other thing I want to mention, especially about retirees, we have presently sixty retirees that make less than $12,000 a year. The average of those sixty people is $6,500 a year. The plans that are being looked at and that were discussed with us for new insurance programs have very high deductibles, $1,000 or more per person, and very high copayments. You're going to take your elderly people that can afford it the least, that are on a budget of getting a retirement of $6,650 a year in a pension, and you're going to saddle them with $1,000 copayments? I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me why anybody would want to do that. When we have a plan that works, clearly has right along, there's no problem with it, you know, I just, I can't see why you would want to adopt something like that. So in closing, I would like to thank everybody for their participation, and I would just like to remind the Council that although Counselor Cobb isn't here tonight to cast his vote, I hope you'll keep that in mind, and I urge you to concur with your Subcommittee and vote no on this recommendation. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak to the public?
Hello. My name's Alan Shadle. I am a member of the City of East Hampton Police Department, also a part of the Insurance Advisory Committee. I was in the Subcommittee meetings. And, Mr. President, I'm going to apologize ahead of time, all the information I have here is not going to take, not going to be able to do in two minutes. So I'm going to apologize ahead of time and just tell you that, if that's okay. First thing I'm going to start with, I'm going to start with a letter that I believe everyone has in front of them from the Insurance Advisory Committee. I'm just going to read that for the record. And it's to the City Council from the Insurance Advisory Committee in regards to the recommendation for MGL Chapter 32B, Sections 21 through 23. Dear City Council, as requested, the City of East Hampton Insurance Advisory Committee has done extensive research on the proposed adoption of MGL Chapter 32B, Sections 21 through 23. It was requested that we submit a document to the City Council outlining our committee's position on this issue. It is a position of the City of East Hampton Insurance Advisory Committee that the City Council should not adopt MGL Chapter 32B, Sections 21 through 23. This position is based on the following reasons. Number one, there is no time limit and/or penalty for the city if these sections are not adopted immediately. Number two, these sections can be adopted at any time if needed. Number three, our current process gives our committee ample time for research and investigation of proposed insurance plans and/or planned changes. This process currently involves collaboration with all city departments and ultimately advises the city officials on what is best for the city and its employees. And number four, our current process, which has been in place since the early 1990s, has been extremely effective in helping the city be fiscally responsible, in so much that the city is showing an annual savings of $478,523 over the current GIC benchmark as outlined in MGL Chapter 32B, Sections 21 through 23. And I would ask the City Council to take, see the attachments for those numbers and where those numbers came from. In addition to that, we've done some additional research since the last meeting with the Subcommittee, and I just want to point out a couple other pros, which some of them may be repetitive to the person that spoke prior to me. Number one, the financial stability of the Hampshire County Trust, I think, is unprecedented in that right now, there's approximately $25 million of premium reserves that are there to be used to stabilize premium rates. So if rates all of a sudden go up, they will tap into that $25 million premium reserve fund in order to stabilize those, to prevent any type of increase to the city or its employees. To me, of all the things that I read and all the research I did, was phenomenal. I don't know that there's any other plan out there, to my knowledge from what I've seen, that has that reserve. Second is, the trust staff is located and accessible for all the administration issues and questions. They're right here, they're close by. I believe there's four employees, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. The last additional thing was also brought up, which was surprising news to us, and I'm going to read this. The trust is self-insured group. It participates in federal retiree drugs subsidy, or called RDS, program. This program returns over $55,000 to member units each year. East Hampton sees approximately $65,000 returned each year from its program. We were taken back by that. We have not seen, nor have we requested, anything to show where that money is going to, but that was a large surprise. So far this year, on 5/1 of 12, the city has already received $13,241.16 from the trust. My understanding, I don't have the exact number, but come December, the city is looking at a fifty, mid $50,000 check as well, coming back from the trust. Nothing that I read, nothing that I know of from the GIC or Chapters 32 of these new proposed laws show any type of return from the state. Just to kind of summarize some of the things I've heard, my understanding is that Northampton has adopted this law. I don't feel, as a member of the committee, that we should be compared to Northampton. I feel that since we have had our process in place with the Insurance Advisory Committee, that we've been fiscally responsible. You have all been fiscally responsible. The design, the way that it works, is right here at the local level. There, the comment that we can look at healthcare and make adjustments in a timely manner that was just mentioned, that can happen right now. We had something recently with Altus Dental that approached and said that they could save the city a substantial amount of money. It was brought to the Subcommittee. We did extensive research, moved on it as fast as we could, and I say that with all sincerity. We moved as fast as we could, had as many meetings as we could, and that took us two months. Ultimately, in that time, once we got through the smoke and mirrors, we were not going to be saved any money. And we ultimately advised and said that we felt it wasn't going to be the best for us, and we did not go with them. The reason I mention that two-month period is because of the thirty days that's outlined in the law. I don't see how any type of decision can be made in thirty days when it comes to health insurance. Health insurance is very complex, and I think if you look at the law, that outlines that. That complex law outlines the complexity of health insurance. And trying to make a thirty, a decision- And trying to make a 30, a decision in 30 days, as far as I'm concerned, is impossible. The Insurance Advisor Committee, the other comment that was made, I believe, is the mayor to seek further savings. We are all for savings as well. There's not a department person in here, there's not a member of our community that isn't aware that we all want and need to save some money because of the financial times that we're in. That is part of our process. If there is something out there that the mayor, or you, or anybody, the finance director feels is going to save us money, submit it to the Insurance Advisory Committee. Let's review it, let's work together, let's see if it is ultimately going to save the money, and let's take the time that is needed to look into that and come up with the decision that's best for all of us. With the adoption of this law, and this is my final statement, with the adoption of this law, there are, there is that Insurance Advisory Committee. If we cannot come to an agreement, as what was explained earlier, it goes down to a three-member panel. A representative from the mayor's office, a representative from the Insurance Advisory Committee, and a representative from the state. If we get to that three-member committee, it is already known that there is a disagreement between the mayor and the Insurance Advisory Committee. In a three-member panel, we have two people that disagree. It's pretty self-explanatory that that third person is going to be the one that's going to make the decision. And ultimately, who's going to make the decision for the city, for you, for me, and for everybody, is the state. I don't feel, and Insurance Advisory does not feel, that we need to let that be in the hands of the state. We would much rather leave it here with us, with the City Council, with our members of our unions, and let us keep everything local. Let's not put it in the state's hands. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the council? Please feel free to come to the podium, set your name and address.
City councilors, my name is Jason Dunham. I'm the East Hampton Firefighters Union President and the elected member of the Insurance Advisory Committee, and have held that position for the last eight years. I'd like to speak briefly about Sections 21 through 23 under Chapter 32B of the Massachusetts General Laws. I have spoken with State Representative John Seibek on multiple occasions about this new law, and after speaking with him, it's my understanding that this law was written to help cities and towns of the Commonwealth that are not being fiscally responsible with their health insurance. I know that a couple of you have mentioned Northampton, and just that, and I know some of you work for the city, but Northampton is a high-usage group, and they had a hard time finding a good provider, and I just think it's, you know, it should be mentioned that they tried to go into the Hampshire County Trust because they thought it would be very beneficial for them, and they were denied to be in the trust. Actually, the trust told them that they could be a separate entity within the trust, but not part of the main group. And it's a last alternative to try and save money because they were not being fiscally responsible with their health insurance. That, however, is not the case with the City of East Hampton. We currently have two systems in place to assure we keep our health insurance in check with respect to cost and healthcare coverage. The Hampshire County Trust looks at carriers, benefits, coverage, and costs on an annual basis. The city's Insurance Advisory Committee looks at the same thing. We also look at other cities and towns and compare our premiums and benefits to theirs. Sometimes the city asks us to look at particular providers and possible savings that we could get from switching to a different provider. As Mr. Shadle mentioned, one of the providers the city asked the Insurance Advisory Committee to look at was Altus Dental. They're based out of Rhode Island and a sister company of Delta Dental. They told the city they could save them thousands of dollars by changing to Altus Dental. They said because they are a sister company of Delta, they're a very large provider, and therefore get much better discounts and lower pricing for services provided by local dental offices. They said they would pass those savings on to us and therefore reduce the cost of our dental insurance. After the Insurance Advisory Committee met with Altus Dental, we went out and researched their claims. We divided up all the local dentist offices among the Insurance Advisory Committee members and went out and asked the local dentists about the claims that were made from Altus Dental. When the Insurance Advisory Committee met again, we shared our findings and found that all the local dentists said the same thing. There were no discounts or lower pricing for services provided to the people who had Altus Dental. In fact, they didn't like dealing with Altus Dental at all because they took 30 or even 60 days to pay the claims submitted by the local dentist offices. The Insurance Advisory Committee met with Altus Dental again. After telling them our findings, they said after reevaluation, they don't think there would be savings to the city if we switched to Altus Dental. From the first time we met with Altus Dental, and after the process of research, investigation, and fact-finding took place, it was a little over 60 days. From that experience and from similar experiences I have found during my eight years on the Insurance Advisory Committee, I have multiple concerns with the new sections that you are being asked to adopt today. 30 days is not enough time to look at, investigate, or research proposals brought forward by the city. A quick decision could prove to be costly to the city and the employees. In this new law, it is only 30 days before it goes to a three-member panel and a decision is made. Insurance companies will tell you anything to acquire your business, whether it's $5 in savings or half a million dollars in savings. After the first year, they will do a cost-benefit analysis and increase your premiums so they keep their expected profit margin. The city's financial director has stated that Health New England told her we could see $500,000 to $750,000 in savings if we switched from Blue Cross to Health New England. Even though there was a request for written documentation supporting those claims, there was none provided. Talk is talk, facts are facts. If the city gave the Insurance Advisory Committee a written proposal from Health New England, we would research it and give the city a report on our findings. Currently, the city's health insurance costs are $500,000 less than the cost of the Tufts Navigator Comparison Plan. We have had 0% increases for the past three years, and prior to that, although there has been significant premium increases statewide, our city has always seen less of an increase than most other communities. I can assure you that the city's Insurance Advisory Committee is working diligently and effectively to keep the city's health insurance costs and benefits in check. I understand you need to be fiscally responsible for the taxpayers of our community, but please think of the employees and their families that will be greatly affected by this vote. Please vote no on 21 through 23.
Any else, anybody else would like to address the council concerning this issue? Okay, maybe now then, are there questions for the Finance Advanced Director?
Did you have some?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I just had one, I guess, and I can address it to Counsel, Counsel of Risk first, and then...
Sure.
I guess I'm a little taken back because I did, I had a conflict on the first meeting of your subcommittee, but I didn't make the second, too. I'm not on that subcommittee. But I never heard that $65,000 savings brought up. Was that something that was never provided to you?
No.
Or is this the first-year hearing of it also? I guess that's my...
It's a rebate on the current plan, as I understand it, but it was never brought up during the discussions. It means that, I guess you can subtract it from the premiums.
I just didn't, you know, as I said, I never was disgusted. I just...
I don't think there was any malicious intent.
No, I don't.
It was just never asked.
I'm not saying that. I just, I didn't know if it ever had come up.
We have plenty of time for discussion on this, but my point, too, is, I mean, these are good things, and these may be what makes us stay where we are, you know? So this is, again, we're not adopting the GIC, we are using it as a tool to get the best plan. But I know the mayor wanted to say, come.
I just want to provide an answer to Counselor Higgins. You might recall, every year we talk about the unfunded insurance liability, and I explain to you that the check that we get from the county goes into the fund. That's why there's about $300,000 against that liability. So it's disclosed to you every year as a part of the budget process.
Thank you. Are there questions for, oh, Counselor Winnie?
We still going to go out under 32B? Are we going to bid out proposals for insurance? Or are we just going to let the Insurance Advisory Committee just go about waiting for the mayor or whoever to bring proposals to them?
Would you like the Finance Director?
Do we go out for proposals, or...
I'd like the Finance Director. I believe the proposals are provided by the city to the new Insurance Advisory Committee. Alyssa, how does that work?
We just received the claims data from the trust last week, and we've provided it...
If you could speak a little louder, I'm sorry.
We just received the claims data from the trust last week. So we've, I believe it was provided by our HR Director to, to get another, another bid to at least one company, and I, we talked about two, to compare costs.
Does that answer your question?
So we needed claims data in order to get that, and that was difficult to get in the past, actually costly to get in the past, and we didn't have to pay for it this time. So part of the decision not to go out and get claims data every year was that we were going to pay and then have, to get a quote, and then have those quotes, you know, rejected because they weren't part of the name brand specified by our union contracts.
So do we go out to bid, as we do under 32B with an RFP, for different companies to come and do apples-to-apples and same services, same...
Well, the way I've quoted in other places, be the first time here for me, is that, you know, you just, you get the claims data and then you ask, you know, you get some information, you can do apples-to-apples comparison, and you can also do any cost savings compared to what you currently have versus something slightly modified with like a different copay or, or emergency room visit or something like that. Currently, the trust does not offer multiple plan designs, so we can't do that within the trust. Other nonprofit organizations do offer multiple plan designs within their, their insurance quoting. So right now, the, if you're with the trust, the plan design that they offer is the plan design that they offer.
They offer it to all the communities.
Right, and it's the same to all of the communities.
Any additional questions for Finance Director Zlatzki? If you don't mind standing nearby, Alyssa, just a few...
I have a question, and Alyssa, I don't know if you know this, but there was talk about $478,000 savings.
Okay.
And that was compared, the GIC benchmark, the Guardian program, is that comparable to what the trust is offering? Do we know this? Are these, is it apples-to-apples?
And it's not the same plan. It's, it's actually, they, I believe they gave you a copy of the report to the Finance, and you'll see on the second page of that report, it'll show you the difference in the copays and deductibles or lack thereof. So the Tufts Navigator Plan is a, it's a PPO, not an HMO, so it's different in that way. It's a little more flexible than an HMO, but it is, does have higher copays and deductibles and does belong to a tiered network, which means it matters who you choose as a provider or hospital. And just because, just because Jason brought it up, I never spoke with Health New England. What I compared was, the GIC offers, I believe, 12 plans, and there is a Health New England plan within the GIC. So if you're just going to compare to the benchmark plan, you can arbitrarily pick another plan. And I believe I sent an email to you guys about a week and a half ago that compared, you know, what you're comparing is 100% enrollment in the Tufts Navigator Plan compared to our plan. But there, that's not really what would happen. What would happen is people would pick what was best for them. And so I compared, if everyone enrolled in the Health New England, this would be the savings. If everyone enrolled in the Tufts Navigator, this would be how much more it would cost us. And there are several different plans in the GIC. So I've never spoken with Health New England about East Hampton. I only looked at the Health New England number in the GIC, which is the same. They don't, Health New England, if they were to quote us directly, would give us a quote on our claims. The GIC offers a rate based on the claims of the entire pool, and you just are absorbed in it, and you, they don't, to quote you the premium, they don't need that claims data. So that was, those are the comparisons I had.
Counselor Winnie?
Are all of the, are all the city employees all in one plan? Partaking of what, the GIC, I don't know what the GIC, what the plan is. Is it, is it, is it Blue Cross Blue Shield?
Everyone's in the Hampshire County Trust. It's a Blue Cross Blue Shield plan. Almost everyone is in an HMO. We don't really offer PPOs. There are, I think, six people in the PPO. I think you have to be retired and prove out-of-state residency in order to qualify for that. And, and then there's a Medex plan, also Blue Cross Blue Shield.
But they're all, all still under Blue Cross Blue Shield? There's not separate unions with separate...
No, they're all, all within the trust, all Blue Cross Blue Shield. That's what, that's what the trust offers.
Counselor Psychowski?
None of these plans that you're talking about, Health New England, all the new plans, they don't have that plus-one feature that the Hampshire County Trust has.
The GIC does not have that. If you are going to quote directly with someone, you can ask for that. And what that does is, the family, if you don't have a plus-one, then everyone who's a plus-one, and I'm a plus-one, would end up paying a family plan. So those people pay a higher premium, but what happens generally is that the, if you have like one insurance company quote you the same thing with a plus-one or without a plus-one, the family plan comes down slightly and the plus-one goes up to, you know, the plus-one gets eliminated. It's generally how that, how that works. And it generally is more expensive because the city pays a, you know, portion. So unless the, the family plan comes down substantially, or there are more family, true family plan, more than three people on the plan in our group, then that's what changes whether or not it's savings for the city or not savings for the city.
But a family plan is more expensive than, than a single-player plan, isn't it?
It's three times as expensive.
Single-player.
More or less, that's slightly less.
I mean, there's, there's one thing, like, I believe it was Jimmy that brought up, that we have 60-some-odd people in that, 93 people in that category, and we have to be careful here this evening to realize that we can't put some undue cost on these people, these 93 people. Okay, I'm done.
Thanks. Counselor, go ahead.
Do you remember how many cities and towns in the Commonwealth have actually joined the GIC?
I don't know that number, no.
Does anybody know that number?
If you give us a minute, we could pull it up.
It's not a very large number. If I recall.
Sorry, we, I'm sorry. But we, do you have someone in the back? If you don't mind coming to, just so you can state your name, and just, since you seem to have that information for us, that'd be terrific.
The Director.
My name's Paul Demarkham with Massachusetts Teachers Association. From what I understand, there's 43 municipalities in the Commonwealth in the GIC. Of that, I believe it's 13 have joined since Chapters 21, 22, and 23 were adopted.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to come and address the council concerning this issue?
Mr. President, could I? There's one question I know was raised...
Watch this for, for the camera, if you don't mind coming to the...
There was one question I forgot to mention earlier that I believe it was raised in the subcommittee, and I don't know if we ever clarified. There was a question about how long we would be in, or a statement that was made. I don't remember exactly how it was, but I made a note to make sure I mention it, that if we, if we, if this is adopted and we end up in the GIC, we are locked in for a three-year With the Hampshire County Trust, we all know there's a renewal date of one year. We're locked in within that year. Within that year, if we decide, say, something happens, we have to give the trust a 90-day notice. So those are some numbers that I, if I remember correctly, were questioned and brought up in the subfinance, the subcommittee, and I just want to make sure those are clear. So it's a three-year commitment to the GIC. We're right now at one year. So even if we decide to make some changes, we still have to stay within that year and give a 90-day notice to the trust.
Excuse me, anyone else would like to address the council?
Just one for Alyssa.
Another question from Alyssa, I'm sorry, Counselor Winnie.
If we go, if we, if we adopt this tonight, okay, are we locked into having to go to the GIC, or are we continuing? the GIC or we continue on with the Hampshire County?
We, we could continue on with the Hampshire County. This legislation doesn't require anyone to go into the GIC. The GIC is just a benchmark to measure against. It sets a floor for the type of coverage that we would have to provide. It would have to be as good, if not better, than the, than the GIC and show savings against our current plan and against the GIC. But you can, you can, you could, we could, we could go out and do the bid information and find savings with a, with Blue Cross Blue Shield in a different way and then go with that and not, and not the, not the GIC, if it was a more cost-effective plan for the city.
So, if we accepted this legislation and our insurance advisory committee is doing everything that they say that they're doing in investigating and looking at all of the different cost factors and so forth and so forth, then we really shouldn't have any fear of us leaving the COG because the COG is doing everything they can to keep the, the prices of the premiums down.
The one thing that the COG isn't doing and a big part of this legislation looks at is plan design and the COG is not looking at plan design.
That's what I wanted to get to the bottom of.
Counselor Derby.
I'm just curious, you know, if, looking at this, what kind of potential savings are we talking about here if there, if there was a change in plan design and there was leaving the COG? Do we know?
To be honest, I don't know because we've just submitted that information and we haven't gotten quotes back because it really depends on our independent claims analysis and how they look at our group. I mean, part of the benefit of being with a COG is that you're part of a larger pool and therefore, you know, sort of, the higher cost medical care gets spread between all of the groups. One of the groups that we're going to look at is MIA, which is also a Blue Cross Blue Shield plan. It's also a collective organization with multiple municipalities in it. And they pool, they pool catastrophic loss, but then quote the municipalities separately. So, their, their design in how they offer the pool is slightly different. So, you're more, you know, your individual municipalities' losses or claims affect you more, more than if you're in a whole larger pool, but it does have that. But that group, MIA, offers multiple plan designs.
Now, a question, now, in order to do that comparison with MIA, say, we don't necessarily have to have passed 32B to make that comparison.
We're going to do the comparison anyway.
That comparison's going to be done anyway.
Yes.
And so, we would potentially down the line know what potential cost savings we could be looking at if there was an adoption of 32B before adopting it.
Or we could do the changes without.
Let's see where you're going. Yeah, let's do it. Yeah. I see where you're going.
I guess, I guess from my perspective, it's interesting in that I, I'm afraid that too many times this ends up feeling like a battle between administration and workers and I don't see it. I see it's the City of East Hampton battling insurance companies. The Hampshire Trust offers one Blue Cross Blue Shield program and that's all we can negotiate with. And yes, they have been doing a great job with their stabilization, but call me cynical, I bet you that Blue Cross Blue Shield will use that up pretty darn quickly. And, and because of that, because we have no option, you, your copays and deductibles could go up substantially and we can't react to that very quickly. And that's why I think sometimes, again, and I think it's important, we're not enrolling in the GIC, we're just adopting the ability to use it. And for this insurance board, which I commend, I think you guys do an outstanding job, have that tool in your pocket to say, "Look what we got here. You going to negotiate with us or not?" I think that's a terrific tool. You guys do an outstanding job. I think that could make you even more powerful. So, I don't see this as administration against workers. I see this, let's be the City of East Hampton against an insurance company, let's put some tools in our pocket and use it for leverage and make it better. And the other thing I know, I also, when I feel that it gets this sense of administration against workers, you have to realize the mayor, whoever he or she may be, or Finance Director, whoever he or she may be, their family, their loved ones are on this health and program too. So, they're not about to say, "You know, I'm going to save some bucks and give some crappy insurance" because it's theirs. They got to live with it too. So, I think that is the impetus of them alone to make sure they're not going to mess people up because it's them too. And so, I don't know, I just see this so much as the town against insurance, let's give ourselves a tool, we're not enrolling in it, we're just going to, and I think Representative Seibek said, "Oh, many communities do that." They just say, "We got it. We got this gun back here. We can use it if you, you know..." Sorry, that's my opinion on it, so. Counselor Derby.
I just have a question for Dan. I know that you said that if this was brought up again, it would take potentially a full fiscal year to reevaluate and look at, you know, if this didn't happen. And I'm just curious if, you know, if this got voted down tonight, it would be, by, per our rules, it would be a two-year minimum, right?
Six months.
Six months, okay, so I don't know where I got two years.
But the other problem with it is there's certain enrollment restrictions that come into play. So, my statement on the fiscal year was that I didn't think it would have, if we put it into play now, our budgetary process allows this to be evaluated and used for the next fiscal year, which our budget process begins after the first of the year.
Right, so I guess my question is...
If we don't vote it in now and we vote it in six months from now, then I don't believe it could be adopted immediately without, first of all, without us dealing with insurance and enrollment plans. I think it would probably, we would go through a budgetary cycle and risk a large increase in healthcare costs should it happen. And I don't see that.
So, the question I'm asking is piecing together the piece about knowing what our potential savings are versus moving forward with adopting this before we know what those potential savings are. There's no restriction for us to say, "Well, there's going to be huge savings, it's going to work out for everybody." Once we find that information out, then if we haven't adopted this yet and we don't have to wait six months, moving forward with it at the time that we have that information.
So, you're asking if, if we delay this vote this evening, then the treasurer would have the time to find out what savings could happen and inform the council? I, I feel that that's possible. I have no objection to that. I would rather delay the vote than vote on it, vote it down, and then have to come back in six months. And that's just my opinion based on the fact that should something happen, I don't know what's going to happen. Fortunately, I was going to say if President Obama lost last night, insurance could go through the roof, but fortunately, that didn't happen. So, I have no problem waiting, you know, until we get that information. I would rather continue this and not vote on it until we get that information and then announce again when we're going to discuss it, rather than vote it down and then, and then, if all you counselors want more information, that certainly you're right. I think that's okay.
I just feel like for me, that would give me more, I would feel more empowered if I, if I understood what the, what the savings could potentially be and I think it would maybe allay some of those concerns.
I saw Counselor Psychowski.
All right, two-part question. What if we remove this from our agenda without prejudice? Wouldn't that come back? It can come back quicker, right?
Well, we have our own rules and we could move to set aside our rules. I would rather just delay the vote, we could delay the vote and continue it for months. I mean, we don't have to wait.
I went to one hearing that the Finance Committee had and I'm here tonight and I listened to everybody here and I listened carefully. And number one, there's not enough information. There's no penalty whether we go into it now or go into it after. I would just rather remove this without prejudice and kill the issue.
Another comment, did you, Counselor Winnie?
I don't want to kill the issue, definitely not, but I agree with Salem. I think that it's warranted that we get more information. And also with that being said, for, for all purposes, none of us on the City Council, I don't think any of us on the City Council partake in any of the, the health insurance for East Hampton. Is that, is that a true statement?
Yeah.
Counselor Psychowski, are you part of the health?
I'll say one thing to you, Joy. It seems like our, the trust that these people have been doing, have been working with, their association have been doing a good job for the town from all the...
I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that. That's not what I'm saying.
And this legislation doesn't do away with that panel either.
I have a question for the Finance Director before she...
Counselor...
Sorry, Alyssa, she wants to get out of the limelight. You have, I just want to clarify what I think the other counselors are asking. You have asked Health New England, I think you're using them as, or some other organization, since you have the claims data, to give you a comparable apples-to-apples premium rate plan. So, you can say, "If we adopted this versus the Hampshire Trust, we could save X, Y, Z." Are you able to do that in a timely manner? And secondly, can you get more than one company? If it's not Health New England, can you do Harvard Pilgrim? Can you do some other company just to have two?
We're going to do two.
And what are you doing? You're doing MIA too?
Yeah.
So, how long would it be before that information?
To be honest with you, Reese Lefebvre, I had a chance to talk with her this afternoon and she, she's the one who submitted that information and I talked to her last week about submitting it to MIA and Health New England. And so, I was going to follow up with our rep for MIA tomorrow to see, to make sure he had it and what else he needed. Because I know that what she said to me is that we have given them the claims data, but they'll ask for some other census data also. And then, once we have all that, then to just put it out to a bunch of different places, you know, it's the same information.
So, would it take a couple of months to get it back?
I'm not sure. Do you know how long? I mean, I've never had a problem getting stuff back from MIA in the past at other communities, but we were already in MIA, so, you know.
Okay, well, I would, I would agree with the counselors that we could wait until we get this information if that's their, their choice. I'd rather not pull this personally, Mr. President, from the agenda, but I would continue the public hearing to be set at a different date. I will make that motion, in fact, once we're done.
Counselor Z, I'm in.
I was going to say, just a comment though, when you're talking about the, the different agencies, Health New England, Blue Cross, and you're talking about getting these, these apples-to-apples, I've been part of the conversations in the past where we're looking at facing staff reductions because of the rising healthcare costs within the public schools. And one of the things, again, that we went back to though was plan design. So, I guess that's kind of my concern is if you get apple-to-apple quotes...
I'm not getting apple-to-apple quotes, I'm getting plan design quotes.
Okay, because again, and even then, this is what I'm going to, I'm hearing these concerns about, "Oh, well, we had Altus Dental or the dental and, well, they said they could save us money." It's still, you know, if we come back in another couple of weeks or months and we're faced with this decision, those quotes again, well, things change. I mean, a quote is here at one given time, so I'm just saying delaying a vote while it may make the most sense this evening to gather more information, you still have the question of whether or not those quotes are, are solid or if it's soft or it's going to change. But I just want to stress though that the plan design has been one of the things that I have seen really effective in saving the cities or saving districts money because you can look at certain things, you can look at the premiums and, again, for the people on fixed incomes and you're looking at that premium and while the premium's twice as much, some towns desire, municipalities decide to reimburse for those premiums. So, for instance, I don't want to say catastrophic care, but if there was an emergency room visit, some municipalities might even consider reimbursing for that premium because it doesn't actually happen that often. So, when it does, the city picks up the tab. Would that be something that we would be considering or could consider moving forward? If we were looking at planning?
We haven't looked at that, but I, I do want to remind you that in the legislation that's in front of you, there is allowances for that and that's what the set aside of the 25-year, 25% of the first year's savings is for. And some communities with the guidance of their insurance advisory committee decide to do that just for those reasons, for deductibles and that sort of thing, but that's decided at the insurance advisory level. Right now, the way things are, first year savings, if we don't have the legislation, there is no requirement to share that.
Okay, any, Counselor Haggen.
I take a little different, little different look at this and I want to start by thanking Counselor Rist at the hearings I went to. It was a, a hearing which I think could, I know he mentions adversarial in his minority report, but you know, there was, you are taking people's collective bargaining rights away with this legislation. I mean, that is part of the thing. I mean, let's get down. And again, I'm a person that, that values the taxpayers, but you are taking people's collective bargaining rights away. And I just wanted to commend all the people that were at that hearing, not just Counselor Rist, but the Finance Director and the advisory members. They all were calm, cool. I thought everything was, information was passed on. Representative Seibek, he was very neutral. He said that this is not necessarily for East Hampton. He didn't say it was or it wasn't. I think Counselor Rist mentioned that. He said some communities, and he said that it was our decision. He was just there, neutral in, in providing information. I guess what bothers me a little is, we have an excellent plan now, from what everybody has said. Everyone's happy with the plan. I'm personally a member of the GIC and I look at the, the trust and there's no tiered physicians, there's no specialists tiered, and the only figure, and then they tell me that six years, it's been relatively flat, three years, there's been no increase. I mean, it seems like it's a, it's a win-win with the employees and the insurance plan they have. They're happy. I think they're doing a job for the town as, or the city, as Counselor Psychowski said. I'm very concerned with two things in the legislation. One is the 30 days and I believe everybody at the hearing, including Counselor Rist, said that that's a problem, that, you know, anyone who's been around collective bargaining knows that in 30 days, you're not going to come up with an agreement. So, it's going to go to a panel and the state's going to control that panel. I mean, it's very, very clear in there that the Secretary of Administration and Finance makes that final decision. He makes that final vote. So, it's a state, we're going to be controlled by the state on healthcare, the city. You're, you're abdicating that to the state and I have a little problem with that. I think we can do it ourselves. And to me, the other thing is we've only heard one solid figure tonight and that's a half a million dollars or just under a half a million dollars. That's the savings the plan is, is generating for the city today. That's the, and by the same token, I think just by having this legislation possible. And one thing Counselor Seibek said is, "You don't have to do it this year, you can do it next year." This is no rush into it. You know, I mean, everyone, I guess I'm looking at it different than Counselor McCoy is saying we should have this. I'm saying we got a good plan, they're saving the city money. Why are we rushing into it? If a year from now or when all these figures come in, it looks like a better plan could be developed, maybe that's the time we vote it in. It's going to be a deterrent to the Hampshire County Trust to keep the costs low because they know that's in the back. They know that's in the back of the, the council, that we always have that hammer. If, if costs start escalating, we could bring it back and we can adopt this, this plan. It's not something we have to adopt this year. I mean, I guess I have a little more value and faith of our employees that they have the, the will of the city's best interests with us. It's a team, it's a team effort between the city and the employees. And I, you know, I'm prepared tonight to vote against this and support the employees and the city.
We both, good friends, I respect each other's opinions. The other number I think we really did hear tonight was, especially after yesterday, a $900,000 deficit in the school budget. I think there are really financial repercussions there. I mean, can, can we be so protective of this inability, you know, this one program that they may result in layoffs? I mean, are you comfortable with that outcome?
Well, as I said, Counselor McCoy, the only figure we've seen is they're saving us a half a million dollars. We haven't heard, you know, we're hearing there's possible savings, we're hearing there's possible comparisons. And what I'm saying is when these comparisons come in, we're talking no more than one fiscal year, we can bring it back up and make those savings. Right now, the employees have a program that's saving us and it's a, it's a very good program for the employees. I just, to me, until there's a problem, you know, again, I think somebody said earlier, if it's not broke, don't fix it. I mean, that's, that's my, my take on that.
I just, if we come up and there are layoffs, can we...
I'm not afraid of talking about layoffs or not, but I want to say one thing. Counselor Haggen's got the right idea tonight and I'm with him on that issue and I'm with you people out there because the only thing, the two meetings, the two meetings I went to, the only information that was presented that I could understand was coming from the Insurance Finance Committee, Advisory Committee, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Just more quick, I don't want to take time, but your comment about layoffs, if layoffs come, if these people... if layoffs come, it's these people that are affected by the layoffs. So they're the ones telling us that they don't want us to do it, so, right? It's not the taxpayers, it's these people right out here that are affected by the layoffs.
And the other, did we...
Well, one comment, though.
Counsel Ziegler.
They're not the only people who are affected.
Well, directly affected. I know what you're saying. It's the citizens of East Hampton who are providing services.
No, is it, are we in agreement? I heard quite a...
They should stay in their budget.
I heard quite a bit of comments about, Counsel, did you want to say something?
I was going to say, if the school committee's nine-hundred thousand dollars in the hole, then maybe they should start adjusting where they're spending their money and start living in the air mines. Why do you have to balance the odds and the facts of everybody else? Because the school committee, the school committee this and the school committee that. They're all part of the same group.
Like Justice says, sixty-two percent of the budget.
One at a time here. Anyway, I think we've had enough of discussion. Is it the opinion here that we would like to continue this public hearing to a further date?
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
I'll second that motion.
Is there a time?
Well, do you want me to make the motion?
Sure. Yeah, but is there a time? You got to put a time for this?
No, I will move to continue this public hearing to be determined by information we receive from the Finance Director.
Okay, so that, when we receive the information from the Finance Director, we will set the date of that public hearing. Is there a second on that motion? Second on that motion, there is discussion, Counsel?
I want to amend the motion that we vote no on this issue and put this issue to rest.
If this motion's defeated, then you can make that motion.
Why can't I amend your motion?
Because it's not germane to the first motion. If you wanted to amend the motion, change the date. No, it's not.
We can take that, we can take your...
You can take up your motion. If the first motion's defeated, we can...
We have this motion to postpone. Is seconded, all those in favor? Aye. Oppose?
I don't think we had any debate on the motion.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought, well, we had a lot of, so, yes. Backing up, we have motion and a second. Is there any additional debate on the, moving the public hearing date?
Continuing.
Continuing.
Well, since the public hearing is still open, I guess I would like to give the city...
No, a motion on the table.
There's a motion on the table, we have to make the motion and vote on it.
You know, I guess my question is, we made this motion, or Counsel Rist made this motion, and I don't know if the employees really want this continued, or they feel they want to go to an up or down vote tonight, and I feel a little uncomfortable. I know it's our decision. I don't know if Counsel Rist is willing to withdraw his motion to get comment from some of the city employee leadership or not.
Can I say two things? Certain counselors have asked for information. I think that's their right.
Absolutely.
And secondly, this is a continued public hearing. Public hearing reopened, they can all come back and say whatever they want, and I think that's appropriate. It is not, all this does is get more information for counselors who feel they need more, and that's the only reason I made the motion. It's not suggesting that because we're delaying the motion, we're trying to get it passed somehow. In fact, it may be the counselors who were previously in favor of this motion get new information and change their minds, but it is important to me, with such an important issue, that if counselors want more information, they get it. It doesn't stop the process, the public hearing's continued, and we can continue this, and it's true, we're not in a rush, so let's debate it until we make a vote. If at the end of a continued public hearing, or another public hearing, we should make a vote and it's defeated, fine, but I'd rather not make a decision this evening if counselors are lacking information. I would rather not see them abstain when they should be. We're elected to make a decision, make a decision, and if they need information, let's give it to them. That's the reason I continue the public hearing.
Okay. Any additional discussion on that, on the motion we have for the prolongation? So all those in favor of continuing the public hearing? Aye, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against?
No.
All right, we need to do a roll.
Okay, I'll do it. We'll call then. So in favor of continuing the public hearing, raise your hand. Or I'll say, okay.
She's going to do a roll.
Okay, this is in favor of continuing.
Right.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Dan Hagan.
No.
Joe McCoy.
Yes.
Chet Ogilovitz.
No.
Dan Rist.
Yes.
Joy Winnie.
Yes.
Nathan Ziegler.
Yes.
Donald Seikowski.
No.
One, two, three. Five yeses, three noes, motion passes.
Okay, so the public hearing will be continued, and for getting more information on the comparison studies from the Finance Director.
Definitely.
Until we get information from the, and then, once that information we have, we will set the new public hearing. Counsel Seikowski, did you still want to make your motion?
Yeah, I would like to amend that.
Well, it'll be amended, it'll be a whole brand new motion.
I'd like to make a motion to defeat this article this evening.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Second.
We have a motion and a...
I'm not sure that's appropriate. We just made a motion to continue the public hearing.
And it passed.
And it passed. So any motion that is directed to removing the item from discussion or from defeating the item is contrary to that motion. So, I mean, we could vote on it, but it'll be a five to four vote anyway, so it's going to be discussed.
You weren't called to vote.